Welcome to the April 20, 2015 City Council Committee of the Whole. First, we have public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Nothing? No one for public comment? Okay, so, public comment is closed. We have three, two subjects today. We will continue with our discussion of the 2015 Comprehensive Plan. Tonight it's capital facilities and utilities. And then we'll do an update on the solid waste contract. No executive session, I don't believe, tonight, so that's our agenda for tonight. The first topic is the Comprehensive Plan. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Before I turn it over to our Community Development Director, Mr. Jeff Thomas, I wanted to answer perhaps a couple of the questions that you had asked last time and insight that you provided for us in terms of upcoming and future presentations of Comprehensive Plans, different elements. First, there was a question whether or not that this plan was, there was similar plans that have been approved by the state agencies. There is, I have a copy of the Shoreline Plan, actually, if you're looking for the total pages, this is probably less pages than the comprehensive plan. Also wanted to say that the, just like anything else, that a critical in nature that comes before the council from Planning Commission, staff had asked the Department of Commerce and Puget Sound Regional Council to take a look at the plan, to see if there's any fatal errors before we bring it to you. And both of those agencies, although they had some comments, there wasn't anything significant in nature that would give us a sense of alarm, so to speak, to do major changes to it. Now, after you've done your review and you give your input, obviously, the plan has to go back to those two agencies for their final approval. You have also asked that, you know, we present to you documents showing previous comp plan and this comp plan policy, some sort of a comparative analysis. I think you're going to hear that from our staff today, so they will help you in that regard. We have electronic version of that, and you also have a hard copies in front of you that we provided for you. With that, I think we're ready to tackle the two elements of the comp plan. That's Comprehensive Plan Utilities and Capital Facilities. Capital Facilities minus Transportation. Transportation is being deferred to another meeting. And I want to thank also Transportation Committee members, Councilmember Rithin, Councilmember Odell, and Councilmember Keller. They spent a significant amount of time here in one of their committee meetings. They did ask good questions. Staff was fully assembled there, both planning and public works. We provided information. They asked for additional information. We will be bringing them for their next available committee meetings, hopefully before the May, I believe, transportation component is scheduled, May 12 meeting. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our Community Development Director, Mr. Jeff Thomas, to kick off the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, council. Before we get started with some slides up here on the screen, I would like to just note the materials that were placed in front of you before this evening's meeting. You'll see a color one page talking about verbs used for policy. Our consultant, Deborah Monkberg, is going to walk you through this in just a few minutes and talk about some of the dialogue the Planning Commission had and what all this means. Additionally, the comment letters from both the state and PSRC that Ben referred to in his introductory remarks, a copy of each of those letters are provided for you there for your reference. And then, there are two larger tables on 11 by 17. One is labeled Capital Facilities Element, the other is labeled Utilities Element. These tables we assembled today thanks to a request from Councilmember Keller over the weekend, and I believe Councilmember Jaren was actually part of that conversation as well. What both of these tables for their respective elements represent, on the left-hand column are the goals and policies in our existing Comprehensive Plan. And the right-hand column of each one are the goals and supporting policies in the draft 2015 plan. So, the intent is that these tables can be helpful to you when you're going through the meteor documents of the draft 2015 plan, as well as the existing Comprehensive Plan itself, and hopefully can save you some time and perhaps energy fishing these out so that you can do a more direct reflection on how things have changed from the 2003 plan as amended over the years to the draft 2015 plan in front of you here this spring.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just saw a notice from Councilmember Hockaby that she's on the phone with IRS and that she'll be a little bit late.
Okay. All right. I will assume that, yeah.
No, no worries. And then finally, in your packet materials for tonight, there was a short memo, I believe it was two and a half, three pages, that, again, on the heels of last Tuesday, staff assembled for the two elements that we're going to be discussing here this evening. And the memo, hopefully, all of you have had a chance to look at it, again, is focused on reflecting that change between the existing plan and the draft plan. So, the memo that was in your packet for this evening that went out last week. So then with our, with our accounting of all of the materials here for this evening, and then hopefully all of you brought your binders as well, the agenda for tonight's study session, at least for Community Development's portion of it, we're going to run through a short set of slides, all of which you've seen before in prior presentations here this spring, related to Comprehensive Plan context and consistency. I will then turn it over to Deborah, who will walk you through that one-page color handout that I referenced a moment ago on verb usage. And then we'll turn it over to Randy Young, and he'll do a short presentation on the capital facilities element, a chance then for you to review and discuss, and then back to Deborah for the utilities element. So that's, and then after all that, you get to talk about garbage, so.
More garbage.
Okay, so with that, we're going to jump right in. Again, friendly reminder, what is a Comprehensive Plan? When you last saw this slide, I referenced page one of the introduction in our study session last week, that really just says it point-blank, it's a blueprint for our The Comprehensive Plan is the visionary document that sets out the goals and the policies, the great exercise that you did at your retreat back in January, each of your visions for the city 20 years from now. Well, we roll all that into the Comprehensive Plan, we have the analysis to support where we want to go over the next 20 years, and that becomes our Comprehensive Plan that then we implement in between these major updates that we're doing right now. Again, what does it look like? It's, ours consists of eight elements, six of which are subject to this update. The pro-plan, as well as the Shoreline Master Program, are not part of this update that you're reviewing here this spring. Last week, we had introductory sessions on the introduction itself, that sets forward the vision, the framework, goals, and some other procedural-type matters. And then we also talked about land use and housing last week. We've received some really good input from some of you so far, related to questions and suggested amendments for those elements. So, we're in the process of compiling a table of questions that we'll be formulating answers to, as well as compiling your suggested amendments, of which, of course, we'll have a chance to go back through, and the council will be able to discuss and deliberate and decide whether to take action on it at a later point in time. A question, a really good question came up from council over the weekend, is this, you don't submit suggested amendments on land use and housing by today, is that our only chance to do it? Of course, the answer is no. I think the city manager last week, in trying to help establish some pace and rhythm to the process here, suggested that if we could have those by this week, that would be great. Of course, we'll continue to work with council to receive your questions and your suggested amendments, and continue to compile those along the way and make some order of them, so. And then, of course, tonight, we're going to talk about capital facilities, as well as the utility elements. Okay, this graphic here is an important one. It was first introduced on March 10th as part of Joe Tovar's presentation to you. This really just reflects back to, how do we come to have a Comprehensive Plan? What goes into it? We have our state law that we have to comply with, growth management, Shoreline Management Act is an example up here on the screen. We have our regional plans and policies, King County, countywide planning policies, PSRC Vision 2040 that we have to be in tune with. And then, of course, we have the vision statement for the city, something that we've spent a lot of time working on here over the past several months, that now we've got as part of the plan from your retreat in January. The Comprehensive Plan gives the context then and sets forward the ability for us then to implement it. In between these major updates, that's what we're busy doing. We're busy improving our regulations, the regulatory component, capital budgeting and capital projects, and our other programs and services that all help implement the Comprehensive Plan. A really good question that came up here in the past week is, the policies that support the overarching goals in the Comprehensive Plan, how does that work? Can a development permit, can we end up with liability exposure for having policies in a plan that can be interpreted in different ways? The answer is, the development regulations are the implementation, one of the implementation arms of the Comprehensive Plan. So, what happens is, when someone comes in for a development permit and submits it just behind us here at the front counter, we go to the codes. We go to the shoreline rules, the subdivision rules, the zoning and land use rules and development standards, to make a decision on that permit. It's our regulations in our municipal code that need to reflect that element of consistency with the overarching Comprehensive Plan for implementation, so. And Deborah's going to get into that a little bit more when she starts talking about some of the verbs here in a few minutes.
She started talking about what I'm talking about.
The verbs and the usage of the verbs that we've discussed. And again, I just touched on it, talking about some of the consistency components here. Comprehensive Plan needs to work within itself, so the different elements aren't meant to be exclusive and be prioritized one over the other. They're all meant to work in tune and in balance with each other. And again, our codes and regulations, our programs, and our capital programs all need to tie back to it and have that element of consistency. And then again, looking externally, we need to be consistent with our state laws and our regional partners and so forth. So, why are we doing this update, other than the fact the state's making us do it and having it done by the end of June? It's meant to incorporate any changes in growth management that come along the way, so that we can make sure our Comprehensive Plan reflects changes that have occurred legislatively at the state level. We also want to recognize changes in the community. Something that we've talked about a little bit with the policies, in this draft 2015 update, policies from the existing Comprehensive Plan need to roll off, perhaps because they've been implemented, or perhaps because circumstances have changed. New policies have rolled on. Changes in the community have occurred. And then, some policies just need to be tidied up and dusted up a little bit, and streamlined or reframed, just depending on what the nature of it is. I also want to add in here, this document, the update that will be eventually adopted by council and sent to the state here this year, in addition to being re-reviewed, as the city manager pointed out in his introductory remarks, for consistency from the state and from PSRC, we also have an annual amendment process. The annual amendment process is meant for both citizens to be able to submit requests for docketing to the city council, to go on an annual work program. But the city can also initiate annual amendments along the way if we see something that we need to go in and do some work on. And that can be from very small language changes, or changes in our, you know, our background information to update different things, to adding a new chapter. At my previous employer, the City of Bellingham, during the annual amendment process, in two separate actions, there were both new chapters added for the environment, as well as economic development. That was part of the annual docketing process, to docket that project for the next year, to come back and be reviewed by council through a legislative action. Okay, and then, just one final slide before I turn it over to Deborah. This is just a snapshot of where we're at again. We're in the middle of work sessions right now, in April and May. As the city manager noted, your next work session as a whole council will be May 12th. But in the meantime, the Transportation Committee, I believe, is probably going to meet again before then. We do have another public open house scheduled for May 28th. It's a tentative date at the moment, but that's the final component of our staff-initiated public outreach plan, that's been going on now for a couple of years. The last one we had during the Planning Commission's review earlier this year, we had a great turnout. I think we had upwards of 30, 35 people that came out and were in attendance and talked with staff. We've got your second public hearing scheduled for June 2nd, and then that will then transform into deliberations and eventual action by the end of June. So with that, I'm going to ask Deborah, we're going to pull up.
Yeah, go ahead.
One thing, I'm trying to figure out where the parks plan should go. I don't have a tab for it in my file, and it's, is parks going to be part of the capital facilities plan, or a separate chapter?
So, the parks is a separate chapter. It's not subject as part of this update right now. There is an existing parks plan that has been updated and adopted by city council. It's just like our Shoreline Master Program is currently in that same status as well.
I have a question for you there. We also have a bikeways and pathways plan, trails and pathways, I've forgotten what we call it, but basically, trails and pathways plan. Seems to me that's almost on an even par with the pro-plan and should be included. And there are project lists that I'm not sure that probably need to be updated, but...
Yeah, so, my understanding of that is that that plan is actually on Parks Work Program to be updating. It's an extension of the pro-plan, just like the Town Center Subarea Plan is an extension of the Comprehensive Plan. So, I've talked with the Parks Director about that, and that will be an effort that CD will be helping support, that effort on Parks Work Program.
But I think something needs to be put into the comp plan. If we're going to put parks in it, then we need to put the other one in it, or at least say we're updating it, and then it will become a part of it. There needs to be some reference to it.
Sure. We'll...
I mean, you need to recognize that it exists and...
So, we'll circle back around and double-check in the pro-plan, and certainly bring that back to council to make sure that...
But it's not the pro-plan, it's the pathways and bikeways plan, trails and bikeways, pathways.
I understand that. And in the parks chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, we'll make sure that that's appropriately referenced in there and report back to council on that.
Okay, then another, just, I'm using this as a, by way of illustration, the subject of connectivity. We had a couple of different cases before the hearing examiner, that he rejected the interpretation of staff in terms of a roadway connection. Was that because of our problem with codes, or a problem in the comp plan? He didn't think it was clear enough, as I recall, and I don't remember in which set of documents, or in both. Most of the connectivity in the comp plan refers to trail connections and pedestrian connections.
Maybe I can respond to that, because Jeff wasn't here with the couple of those decisions. I think that's really related to implementing regulations, particularly your public work standards.
Which is scheduled to be updated on the Planning Commission's calendar...
This summer.
This summer, so it'll be coming back for the council, hopefully, in the fall, if we don't pile up things, obviously, but that was not the comp plan issue, it was more like an implementing regulations and the standards issue.
Thank you. And then, the other issue I have is, it's very hard to read this and get meat to it when you don't have the Volume Two subject matter linked properly to the plan itself, with references either in the body of it somewhere, or in a footnote, whichever way, but express reference to the important things that back it up, especially if it's a broad policy that you don't have, that you need to give context to.
Yep, and that's, that's a great question. That was also subject to Councilmember Keller's email over the weekend to staff, and we are going to begin work on that, to tie that together better for the council.
Thank you.
With that, then, we're going to switch out the video here, and...
Is this, can you hear me? Is this on?
I have a request to make. Jeff, you were very soft when you were speaking, and if you can turn up the volume over there, it'd be great.
Sure.
And talk into the mic, because a lot of your words sounded like they were being swallowed, and we couldn't clearly hear them. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm getting hard of hearing.
All right, can you hear me? I'm going to just get started.
Yeah, that's great.
That's pretty loud now.
Good.
Thank you.
There was a question, I believe it was in the email that Councilman Keller and Councilwoman Jaren sent, asking about our choice of verbs. Are you getting a lot of feedback? I feel like I'm hearing that. And we had prepared this, that was a similar discussion and set of questions that we talked through with the Planning Commission. So, we provided you with this handout that's up on the screen, and I think in each of your spaces there, that describes a little bit of discussion that we had with the Planning Commission about verb choice and verb usage in the goals and policies. And this was really intended to be sort of a framework for, or construct for our common understanding of how we were selecting verbs. And basically, what it's saying is that for the range of verbs that we selected in the Comprehensive Plan, we sort of looked at three kinds of characteristics, and those are the question, or four characteristics, and those are the questions up at the top of the page there. And the first is, is the guidance on this policy of importance? Is it an important direction that needs to be highlighted? And this is sort of a go/no-go question for the goals and policies, because our thought was that everything that's in the Comprehensive Plan should be an important, provide some important direction. So, the first thing to know is that the way that we've got these verbs grouped is not intended to indicate relative importance or priority. It's really just three different kind of categories. Because the next question is, is there agreement? Is there solid agreement about policy direction? And in some cases, there's very clear, solid agreement; in other cases, there is agreement, but maybe not quite as solid, and in other cases, there's no agreement. The third question is, is there sufficient information to really understand what we're saying about direction? So, for example, we have some policies in the plan right now that address climate change. That is an evolving, there is evolving science on that, and it is not fully understood what all the implications are. So that's a case where you might use slightly less definitive language about what needs to happen. And then the third question, or the fourth question is, does the city have direct control? And tonight's discussion on utilities and capital facilities is a very good case in point, where the city does not have direct control over some of those services. And that, again, sort of drove us to think through what verb to pick. So, if you look at the circles there, the first circle on your far-left, as you're looking at the page, that's kind of a blue, is a situation where there is high importance, there is high agreement and understanding, good information, and the city has full control. And so, the kind of verbs that we use there are much stronger. They're designate, establish, adopt, ensure, incentivize. They were verbs, actions that the city can take. And you can see there's an example down there that talks about zoning land, which is something the city has control over. Next category over, again, the importance is high for everything that's in the plan, but that for the next three questions, in combination of each other, there's sort of maybe a trend more toward the middle. So maybe there's good agreement, but the city doesn't have direct control. Or maybe there's not good information, and there's good agreement. So, again, you see, you see the kinds of verbs, and this is frankly, the most common area, and you see the kinds of verbs that are used, and you see the sample there, which is encourage preservation of existing affordable housing stock. And then the last, the orange circle, is again, high importance, but the issue of agreement, good information, and direct control maybe trends towards low. And so you see a little bit softer verbs there, and, and then the sample, which is talking about participating in regional efforts to identify and preserve historic sites. Again, this isn't intended to suggest that the things in the orange are of any less importance, it just really relates to information, control, and overall agreement on that. So that, that's kind of, it's not a comprehensive list of all the verbs that are in the plan, but it's sort of a way of understanding how we went about thinking through what verbs to use. I won't say that, you know, we followed this to a T, there was a little bit of editorial choice as we went through there, but this is sort of generally the framework that we used. Two other, just quick points, there was a question about should, and why that was so much more prevalent in the 2003 plan than in this current one, and that was sort of an editorial choice. If you look at where the word should is used in the current Comprehensive Plan, it's almost always married up with another verb. So, should designate, should promote, should encourage, we just dropped it. And we said, if what we want to do is encourage or promote, or whatever, we should just use that verb. And it really felt like it was just a cleaner way to put it. There may be some cases where should's appropriate, and we'd be happy to kind of talk through that with you if we find those. And then the last one was a question about shell and the use of shell. We had fairly clear, explicit direction to avoid the use of a word like shell or require, because that is more regulatory and, and more of a requirement and less of policy guidance. So we minimized and tried not to use that word as much as we could. Does that help at all? Does that more, further confuse the issue?
Councilmember Jaren.
Thank you. Yeah, it helps some. Basically, what you're saying is that the comp plan really is not something we have to do, the instructions in there. So, we're not going to use shell. We leave that to the, the code and the development regs, correct?
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm saying is that the Comprehensive Plan is not a regulatory document, it's a policy guidance document, and so the use of shell and require is probably less appropriate there.
Okay. It would help if, you said, these are some sample verbs, it would help, there are a whole lot of other verbs I was looking at. Provide, plan, coordinate, identify, use, work, incorporate, reduce, use, design, work with, maintain.
Yeah.
Be a good idea if we knew what you, are those strong verbs, or weak verbs, or what?
I was just looking at your list, and I, I kind of thought they were all in the first category, almost everything you just said. We're like designate, establish, were the ones that you used.
If it's helpful, we can take a shot at going through all of the verbs. I will say, again, it's not a super clean, you know, separation here, they're not siloed. There is a little bit of crossover, and in the case of the plan, the 2015 version, there were places where we used some editorial license, just given the context of the policy that, where it seemed to make sense, so. But if it would help, we can, we can definitely try to, I don't, I don't want to, I guess, further...
Well, the reason I ask that is because there are some policies which you can't necessarily do both, and so you have to know which really is the priority one. You might have minimize energy use, but over here, you might say enhance public facilities. Well, maybe you can't minimize energy use by enhancing public facilities, they, they might be contradictory.
I'm sure that there are policies... I'm sure that there are policies like that in the document where there's some contradictions. I think there is some inherent tension in any kind of comprehensive plan, because there are some competing interests and completing, competing priorities. And the, the art side of making decisions on the comprehensive plans comes from the planning commission and the city council being able to balance some of those priorities and making a policy call on that. And we can do our best to clarify that, but I think there's always going to be a certain amount of kind of inherent, that little bit of tension there.
Well, the one that we've seen over the last 15 years is the contradiction, apparent contradiction between maintaining neighborhood character and improving connectivity. That we hear all the time.
Yes, and we'll hear.
Councilmember Odell.
I get what you're trying to do here, I think. But to me, the old plan is a little more directive. And the way we're going here is more or less a guideline, which is not the same thing as the plan in my book. The plan basically, most plans have a highly directive aspect to it, where as guidelines are along whole portions of latitude. And if we're going to take that route, I think maybe we need to reconsider the name of the plan.
Councilmember Keller.
It's, it's interesting to me, because the may, should, and shall really gave some priorities. And it was, it seemed like if you were reading a sentence in the old plan, you knew what, what the priority was. However, I wasn't looking at it the way you're discussing that, from a regulatory point of view. So the legal requirements of not having may, should, and shall, because I was thinking of that when we were putting the first plan together, it's not there. There, there doesn't have to be that connection, that direct connection. Is that what we're saying in this policy? And I would, I would say that what stumbling blocks did we run into in the older plan, maybe with the shall or should, that maybe was misplaced, that, that gave us a little trouble? And would this be the trend of most cities, that they were using, not using the may, should, and shall then? It's really a discussion point. I know it might sound a little convoluted, but it's...
Yeah. I, I can take a shot at an answer. There, I would say, as far as the first question, the stumbling blocks, we can come back and show you some of the issues that we saw with those. I don't have those kind of right noticed here, but I can provide some examples later. With regard to what are most cities doing, I would say most cities are moving back away from being very specific and very definitive, and looking for, to develop policy that is aspirational and points a direction, but doesn't specifically pin down exactly how it's going to be implemented. And that's with the recognition and understanding that these are a 20-year timeframe. And so what might seem like a major priority right now, or there might seem to be a very clear implementation direction, if it gets picked up in five years or 10 years, there's different context and different issues that may arise. And so there, there is intentionally in some of the update work that's happening right now, direction given, but flexibility allowed for in how it gets implemented. And that gets back to the question of how directive it should be. And, and because this is a long-range plan, it's intentionally more general. I would say a plan that is an implementation plan or a strategic plan, that is going to be more directive and more specific in what needs to happen, because that's a shorter timeframe that you're planning for.
And if I may just add, add on to that, one very specific policy directive that came from the planning commission, again, I think it's been referenced here in a past study session, but is Policy EC 1.18, which states very clearly, create and support a robust and comprehensive urban forestry management plan by 2016. So that policy directive flies a little bit against what Deborah just noted, and is very specific, has a very short timeframe on it, next year. So that's definitely a, a decision point for the council as part of this plan, something like that.
And that, that was a policy that we talked about, because it is out of character with the rest of the plan. And there was real discussion about, is this really what we want to say? And they, that call was made by the planning commission.
Okay. Continue on.
Okay. At this point, we're gonna ask Randy to take to the podium, and we'll switch back over. And we've got a short set of slides regarding capital facilities.
Good evening. My name is Randy Young. It's been my pleasure to, thank you, okay, to be part of the team working on your comprehensive plan and specifically working with you on the capital facilities element. I've been at this quite a few years. It's been my pleasure to serve the city before in that capacity. I actually have been developing capital facilities elements for comprehensive plans since the mid 1980s, when they were first required by the state of Florida for local governments there. And then in 1990, our state decided to make a similar requirement. I had the honor of being asked by the state of Washington to write the technical assistance guide for local governments on how one does this kind of planning. And it was fun to share my experiences. It was also fun to learn from a lot of other people. So I'm happy to share my experience with you, but don't want to pretend that I have all the answers. I'm hoping I'll be helpful to you this evening with a highlight of our principal goals. At the request of staff, I have added a slide that's gonna make a comparison of the new goals to the old goals.
And policies?
Just goals this evening. I only got the request this morning about policies. It was a little difficult to put that together. And if I may, about policies, the framework for the team being launched on this whole project was to bring to it the best practices and our experience in other communities, to spend a bit of time reviewing the plan that you had, but not trying to create an anthology or a crosswalk matrix of every old and every new policy, so that we could see all those changes. It is a fair question, but our charter was to develop a new plan based on best practices and to go forward with that. And so it would take a little effort on our part to go back and reconstruct the linkages between old policies and new. We're very happy with the new policies, and if the opportunity presents itself to get into a back and forth about old and new, I certainly can answer those questions, but I'm not prepared tonight to present a, a matrix of what those changes are. The five policy areas, five goals that we've established, take a more straightforward look than your current plan, your old plan, which has a list of nearly a dozen framework goals. We're laying out, as you can see in simple language, some things that, notwithstanding your previous conversation of a moment ago about verbs, is because it is capital facilities oriented, somewhat prescriptive, it's somewhat directive. We are saying, we're going to provide public facilities. We're, we're gonna be in that business, and we're gonna partner with the agencies that are our partners. We're gonna do it in a particular way. We're gonna do it to support our land use element, because the land use element is the centerpiece of the entire plan, and all the other elements need to toe the line, deliver on it, and coordinate with it. The remaining four goals are about, okay, if we're in the business of providing those facilities, what else do we need to know about them in broad groups? So group number, goal number two, the first broad grouping is, those facilities have to be good enough. Okay? We use the phrase adequate levels of service. And then the policies get into the details of how do we know if they're good or bad, and how good or how bad, and under what circumstances. But it's not enough to just provide any old facility. It's a facility that has to be good enough. Number two, in our, in our, actually, number three in the goals, the, the second thing about our facilities that we're worried about and concerned about is we have to be able to afford them. Because we can have a fine list of capital facilities that do a great job of supporting the land use element and have dandy levels of service, and the only problem is we can't pay for them. And so this goal speaks to financial feasibility. At the goal level, it's very broad. At the policy level, it starts getting into the specifics of what are good things to do, what are things not so good to do. And per the conversation Deborah had with us about verbs, it stops short of saying, well, this year's update of the park impact fee will lead to a rate of $1,847. I mean, that's way beyond the scope of this document, but it's gonna talk about the kinds of things that we look to for financial feasibility. The fourth goal is that the facilities, if adequate and if affordable, also need to be designed in ways that make them really appropriate to the community. This is probably one of the biggest areas of change from your current comp plan. There was relatively little in the current comp plan that spoke to sustainability, carbon footprints, energy conservation, energy minimization. We have a really rich array of policies now that the planning commission spent some time on. And last but not least, if we deliver on the first four things, we're not done. It's not time to walk our back, walk, walk away from this, turn our back and cut the ribbon and say we're done. As a city, you own a lot of those facilities, and your partner agencies own their facilities. We have a strong goal, a very brief set of policies that go with it, but a strong goal that says, make sure you can take care of it. Don't just build it, be happy about it, then watch it deteriorate. And so those are the five goals. And what I want to do now is, I'm gonna skip ahead for a second and show you a comparison of the current goals and these new goals on side of a side-by-side basis. Down the left side are the nine goals of your existing comp plan. And on the right side are the references to either which goal we believe it connects to, and in some cases, it connects to more than one, or whether or not a particular goal is no longer needed.
Can we get a printout of that, Ben?
Sure.
Or email it to us?
Just do it like, we kind of weigh in that sensibility, and I just got it first, so we can just email it. Sign after the question.
Perfect.
So I'm, don't propose to take your time and walk through each of them. I'm just sort of giving you a minute to kind of glance at the old goals, new goals. But I want to make the point that there are goals that we think are no longer goals in the update, like goal number five. You have a capital facilities plan. In fact, it is in the background document. It was always required to be there. It still is. We don't need a goal to do it. We're doing it. I mean, it would be beyond breaking the goals to not do it. We would have broken a number of laws. We'd lose state funding. It just, there's no need for a goal statement like that. On the other hand, we have statements that we think appear in more than one goal. So old goal number one, levels of service for development, we think belongs really in our new goal number one, to provide facilities that are consistent with the land use element. But also, we think new goal number one is picked up by coordination with other agencies, and old goal number four. I think at the core of it, this is not about which goal did we nitpick and decide exactly how to reword. What we want to say is, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we're very comfortable with presenting you with a really robust framework of five new goals. The planning commission got very comfortable with them, felt that it really simplified the understanding of the direction that we're taking, boiled it down to five easy-to-follow items and, and kind of a logic that I just walked you through. We gotta provide them. They gotta be good enough. We gotta be able to afford them. They gotta be designed well. We gotta take care of them. It's, it's a much simpler message. And then we felt that the more detailed parts of that message could fall to the policy statements or even to implementation. So can I go backward? Yes, I can. Yay. So we were here at the goals. I want to talk now briefly about the fact that, in addition to the goals, all of the elements of the comprehensive plan have backup information. And specifically for the capital facilities element, these four things are listed and required. This is not our rewording them. This is pretty much verbatim out of the statutes. You have to have an inventory of what you own. And the logic behind that is how can you plan for the new if you haven't bothered to take a look at what you've already got? Then, after you know what you've got, you take a look at what you need. And a lot of that is driven by the level of service understanding from both the goals and policies. But it also has to do with population forecasts in your, in your land use element. And then if we know what we need to fill out the voids of, of meeting up with growth and maintaining our, our existing facilities, then we turn that into specific proposed investments. We call those capital improvement projects. And there are lists of them, and they're named, and they have price tags, and they have timing and so forth. The level of detail in the underlying plan documents, the transportation element, the utilities elements, is greater than the level of detail in the capital facilities element. It's sufficient in this element to have a summary and a reference to the others. We've learned from long experience that we can make these documents so thorough that they become unreadable. People just will step away from it because there's too much information. So what we've tried to do is find a balance that says that information exists. We want to be totally transparent, but we're not trying to be transparent in a document the size of two phone directories. We're trying to say, here's the first view of it. If we want more, here's the document or the chapter to turn to for more detail. And as part of our assurance that we can pay for this, the fourth requirement in state law is that you have to have a funding plan that demonstrates with specific sources and amounts of money that you have the ability to fund these projects. It doesn't mean that you have to have adopted all the sources or received all the grants at the time the document is adopted, but you can't just say, gosh, I don't know, or sources to be determined, or we'll figure it out later. You have, have to understand that if you've committed to a list of projects totaling $10 million or $50 million, you have to have some fairly realistic sense of how you're gonna get there. All of this is in the supporting analysis. Basically, these four things are done in little mini chapters within the supporting analysis, so that a reader can say, I'm interested in what's going on in the schools. So they can turn to the school district section, and they can find this list of four things for each of the three school districts. First of all, like Washington schools and the, the other, St. Quanbey Valley schools and so on. If they'd rather look at the parks, they can look at a similar table of contents for parks, another one for transportation. So it's, it's all put together so that you can read about that particular kind of facility and see everything from beginning to end, ending with what are we gonna build and how much is it gonna cost? Now, this supporting analysis is required in the Growth Management Act for any city that does capital improvements plans, does comprehensive plans. But if you don't do impact fees, this is all you have to do. Oh, oops, I'm in a city that does impact fees. My fingerprints are on some of those impact fees. So, thank you, Mr. City Manager. So I want to remind you that the plan document is required by state statute to have additional information in it. And this is, of course, shocking news to you, that the state legislature has written requirements that actually appear in two different sections of the code, but they're about the same thing. I know that's never happened before. He said tongue firmly in cheek. This set of requirements does not appear in 3678, which is the RCW that covers the comp plan. These requirements speak to the comp plan, but they're hidden in 8202, which is the impact fee authorization statute. And basically, the legislature said, oh yeah, if you're gonna do impact fees, we need to know even more than we already said you have to know about your capital facilities. So for your transportation, for your parks, we have to know these three things. First, do we have any existing deficiencies? And if so, do we have the means to eliminate them? Why do impact fees care about it? Because we're prohibited from charging impact fees for existing deficiencies. So this is where the comp plan has to identify what those deficiencies are in order to prove that we're not paying for those with impact fees. And the means to eliminate them is further proof that we're not using impact fees for them. Second requirement is, okay, you've taken care of the existing problem. Now, growth is coming. Do you have any existing facilities that you could use to serve growth? So before you rush out and immediately start charging impact fees for new stuff, if you have some unused capacity of an existing facility, and new development can use that, then you wouldn't further increase the impact fees. Fairly rare for cities to get far enough ahead of development to own all the parks you need, or all the transportation networks, or the schools to own all the classrooms. What this has really come to mean in the real world of impact fees is that when we adopt a fee and we say, we're going to build this new road, once we get around to building it, we don't take it off the impact fee list because we haven't used up all of its capacity. So it joins this second bullet, and it's something where now we've got it partially paid for. We need to earn the rest of the money from even, even longer range development. And in your transportation impact fee, we made very clear what that dollar amount looks like. We had a separate column in some of the key tables called reserve capacity. In other words, paying for it now, but we're gonna earn it later from development beyond the, the five and 10-year planning horizons. And then last but not least, the state statute says, now you can talk about impact fees by demonstrating what additional public facilities you need for new development, and therefore you can charge them for their proportionate share of that. So some of the stuff that's going on in your capital facilities plan might not be in the plan of another city, a city that doesn't have impact fees. One or two more slides, and I'll have wrapped up my summary for you. I want to remind you that there is a wide variety of facilities that you are required to take a look at and include in your plan. And those are the, the top half of that slide, the ones that are city-provided. And pretty much all of them in the right-hand column are listed as city of Sammamish. Of course, you would include those. It's your plan. It's your public facility. You budget for it. You buy the facilities. You know, it's, nobody questions why you would include that in your comprehensive plan. It's always been interesting for the community to whole, as a whole, to understand the rest of this list, because you're not the fire service provider, or the librarian, or the school district, or the water and or the water and sewer provider. Why are you planning for them? And why are you incorporating their plans in your plan? Because it's not your plan. But you are the exclusive land use planner. They are not. And the Growth Management Act envisions you in setting that leadership role, deciding where growth will happen, under what circumstances, at what density, at what speed, and then coordinating with these partners, bringing them to the table and saying, "We really want to do this. We need to make sure that you can provide those other facilities." And make sure that they're not on a different page going, "Oh, no, we want to put the school over here." Or, "We don't want to put a water line there." Now, the tough part about this is you cannot command their performance. And so, we have to use words, speaking to verbs, like coordinating and cooperating and meeting with and so forth. But I think Sammamish has a pretty decent track record on that happening more successfully than not most of the time. And it's typical of how other cities have to approach the same problem. You can't require them to come in here and strip their plan of things you don't like. It's their plan. They're in charge of providing those facilities. But you can make it quite clear that if they're doing things that are contrary to your land use element, they're either wasting their constituents' money because they're building stuff that you don't see being needed, or worse yet, they're failing to meet a need where you're authorizing development, you're providing all the other facilities, and they're the outlier. For some reason, they didn't get the message, they didn't get the memo, and they're not cooperating. And so, there's a bully pulpit there for you to use first privately in negotiations with them. And if necessary, it hasn't happened so far, to pound the table publicly and say, "We're headed in this direction, and everybody's headed in this direction, but Agency X has got a different plan. And we don't know where it comes from, and they run it and they're entitled to it, but it's totally inconsistent with what we're doing."
Councilmember Witten had a question.
Yes, I do. I have heartburn over Policy 1.4 in the capital facilities thing, which says we should incorporate by reference the plans for the three schools, the two water districts and sewers, and metro and sound transit. And, you know, those are out of our control. I know particularly in sewer, we're supposed to be the dog that wags the tail of the sewer and be in control. And they're supposed to correspond to our land use, not the other way around.
Right.
Incorporating by reference makes that as much a part of the plan as our land use section. So, my concern is, should we be, I mean, this is a legal concept. I mean, when you incorporate by reference, it's as if you're spelling out each element of their plans. And you just said we should be using words coordinating, participating, et cetera. So, I don't think we should be incorporating by reference. Maybe that's a question for our attorney. But it seems to me you're putting them on an equal par with our land use section and the other sections of this plan. And that's not what we should be doing, I don't think.
Well, a couple of things to think about.
I mean, and those are the plans in their entirety, not just the, you know, it...
So, so just a couple of things to think about. First, just an observation from my receding hairline and graying hair and 30 years of doing this since the mid-'80s. It's an interesting question that I've, in 30 years, never had raised. Because in 30 years, we've, I've never had an experience of a city and its partner agencies being unable to work out those differences. Notice, I didn't say that they've never had differences. It's never risen to the level of, "We shouldn't have adopted your plan and our plan," or, "We're going to take your plan out of our plan," or, "We're going to refuse to put your plan in our plan." It hasn't ever gotten to that. So, I'm not saying it can't and won't happen, but I'm having to think about it for the first time, hearing it from you. And it's, it's at least hopeful message that it hasn't happened before. Then I would ask, as a follow-up question, for me to think about and for all of you, if we didn't adopt their plans by reference, where would we be? Would we therefore be silent on the subject of what the schools are going to do and where water and sewer is going to be? Would we not, for example, authorize impact fees for schools? We're not allowed to charge impact fees on behalf of the school districts unless they have a comp plan in our comp plan. So, if we tell them to go away, we've also told them to take their impact fees away. Water and sewer, they may not do things the way you like all the time, but if we take them out of the plan, do we have anything to say? What does it do to our ability to regulate the permit process and try and use water and sewer connections as part of that discussion? I'm unwilling to say we can't think of a way, a different way to answer your question, but I've obviously not had to do it before.
First of all, your point, we can work it out, okay? I agree, it can be worked out. But you're putting the policies in their plans on an equal par, making them part of the cities. And that's not appropriate where there's an inconsistency. I mean, how many of, we've never even been seen the, well, some of us have seen maybe this water districts, but generally, we're not familiar with the plans, or at least none of the details of the plans. None of us know where they're consistent and where they're inconsistent. You know, when I draft as a lawyer, I use incorporate by reference all the time. And somewhere in the document, I usually say, "In case of any inconsistency, this will control." I also would say, the sewer in particular, because we've had issues with that before, it's really important not to adopt on a par with the sewer. I mean, yes, I'm hoping we could always work it out, but the comment is, "I don't think you should put, adopt them into your comp plan to the extent they might be inconsistent." That would be qualifying language you might consider is, they're adopted and incorporated by the reference to the extent there's no inconsistency or conflict with other provisions of the city plan. Also, I'm not aware that we ever incorporated by reference these plans in our first volume. It may be there, but I am not aware of that. So, I think, and I would say you would want to be, you need some qualifier to say the city's plan and its other provisions are controlling. There needs to be something. I mean, I'd love to see the attorney's input on that, but just to say they're in, creates a potential for much conflict, I think.
Which city manager?
Maybe I can help answer some of these questions and, because Randy is not familiar with the ins and outs. I think that, was it early, middle of last year, when the water sewer district did their comprehensive plan, we had a very detailed review comments. We actually had the water sewer district staff and consultant came over here to the council on a study session, page by page, line by line, that we went through their plans. We wanted to make sure for, A, the sewer plan is being provided, supports the council's policy on the land use, particularly Town Center was the one that you were paying attention. The other part of it is also the water quality and environment in terms of the lakes, that how do we protect those lakes, what opportunities are there to extend it. So, there has been some coordinating efforts taking place between the two. And for Sammamish Plateau Water Sewer District, to their credit, actually, there were some future suggestions that they had included in their plans to make sure that it reflects the council desires and wishes there.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? That it reflects to their credit?
Say it again. I'm sorry, I don't understand.
I'm just asking, you were saying that, "To their credit..."
To their credit, that they have actually accepted some of the changes and included in their plans. That's what I'm saying. So, I don't know what the schedule with the Northeast Water Sewer District and their comp plan, the sun is killing me out there. One staff member could please...
No, no.
Thank you. It's hard to see. So, I don't know what their schedule is, Councilmember Witten, in terms of their comp plan, when they're going to upgrade. I fully expect them to send us because by state law, through their State Environmental Policy Act review process, that comp plan has to have a CIPA process. That requires City of Sammamish's comments, and that requires that district to respond to city's comments. So, we will be close to coordinating that particular...
I understand, but when you have a comment and back and forth, it doesn't mean they have to accept the comments. I mean, I can tell you hundreds and thousands of people who are unhappy when they make a comment about something and the agency drafting a plan doesn't accept it. And the response usually is, "Comment received." I mean, there still needs to be some qualifier here from a legal standpoint that accomplishes the goal of saying, you can say coordinate, you can say acknowledge, you can do whatever, but somewhere you need to have a limitation if you're going to use the word "adopt," because that's a mandate. And their policies, and notice, they can amend it at any time. So, what you're saying now may not be true with an amendment that they adopt. You still need something that's saying, "Our provisions shall control," you know, in terms of our document, in case there's a conflict or inconsistency. You need some qualifier or something that just doesn't adopt ad hoc. I mean, that's really, what are you adopting? Who knows?
So, let me finish my sentence, that we will be looking at closely with the North Water Sewer District's comp plan when they ready to upgrade and update their comprehensive sewer plan, too.
But that doesn't answer the underlying issue of the conflict or potential for conflict.
I didn't take the comment to mean that it solved it. It was just information that there is an ongoing coordination with another agency. Your current plan, by the way, for reference, CFP Policy 4.3 uses identical language, so you've been doing this since, I don't know how many plans back. And as I say, in 30 years, I've never seen the problem. That doesn't mean I don't take seriously your concern as, as an attorney. I'm just suggesting it's, it's a new way of thinking about it that I've not encountered before. I've actually finished my prepared remarks. Are there other questions for me?
Let's see, Councilmember O'Dell.
Thank you. Appreciate your run-through on this. I have three things. First of all, on your fire EMS, you have that under other entities, which is true. However, it's a bit of a hybrid, which has, the city owns the stations and could be the home of the stock. I just wanted to...
Yes.
...point that out. Other schools, when I was reading the detail on that, I noted that while the three school districts are fairly close in standards, there is a difference between them.
Yes.
Particularly in class size, if you have to break it.
Right.
And to me, that's a little, a bit of inconsistency here, but we have three school districts, and I'm not sure how we force equality across the board. The third thing is, under the other entities, there is one that I think is missing on that, is electricity and gas. Basically, a percent of energy is missing from the list here, as is William's pipeline system, which is a major arterial through part of our town.
We generally don't include agencies that are either profit-making or nonprofit, but not public governmental agencies in this element. There's usually a reference to them in the utilities element, and I think you may be talking about that in a few minutes.
Okay. Thank you. You're correct.
Okay.
And then, Councilmember Valderrama.
Thank you, Randy, for taking us through this plan. As has been said before, I wanted to follow up on the comments of Councilmember Witten about policies not being equal. And we've talked about the coordination that's taken place with Sammamish Water Plateau and hopefully, a future coordination taking place with the Northeast Water as they come and schedule their update. However, it would seem to me that it would behoove the city to be able to get together and at least coordinate a common vision of what we're looking at, and so that we can make sure that, from that vision, as we start to look at our own different goals and policies, that they're aligning to what direction that we're going. Additionally, if you go back two slides... Go forward one, I think. Oh, no, no, that's good, that's good. The inventory of existing facilities, as we start to look at the supporting plans, is the plan that we are going to work with the water districts and some of these other entities to have and capture what facilities they have and assets they have under the same guise that you had mentioned before that we need?
All of these providers have produced to the city, one form or another, their version of the capital facilities plan that accommodates these four requirements. When we saw documents that were incomplete, or vague, or didn't seem to cover one, we communicated back with them, and either were directed to supporting documents of theirs or another chapter of their document, or in a couple of cases, they made some changes.
So, in theory, then, if we have their current existing facilities and their forecast of future needs, there is some discussion at some level, or could be some discussion of where are we going as a city from each of the different ones, and further coordination could build upon that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
To Deborah's point about verbs, we've put in here a fairly strong word "coordinate" and a fairly weak word "coordinate." You know, we're not saying when, where, and how, and how often the meetings will take place, and who winds up the winners and losers, but it does say, "We're not just hoping somehow it will get better." The city sees itself as being proactive in that it's assigning to itself what I treat as a requirement to enter into that coordination. And I think city managers indicating to us that it's not uncommon, certainly at the staff level, to first find out about their planning efforts and then to work with them in order to make sure that there is as much consistency as possible.
I see coordination on, and I know the staffs work together when they're going to put in a new street to see, well, you have to put in some new sewers and coordinate at that level. However, the future vision as to where we're going with the city, I think that has to have a much more active coordination that needs to take place as a vision that guides it beyond the day-to-day type of operation. That's my concerning, builds on what Councilmember Witten had said, because our policies and their policies may not be equal or aligned always. Thank you.
Councilmember Keller.
Thank you. I want to actually thank the staff also. The beginning introduction was very helpful to me, looking at this. Randy, I don't want to get into wordsmithing, but first, you started off by saying, "The land use is really the core of our comprehensive plan," because everything supports that. And actually, the water utilities, I'm just thinking out loud as I go along, really, their plan needs to dovetail in with our land use plan. Nobody works if the land use isn't being supported.
Right.
So, even though they have their own plans, their plans somehow has to be related to the land use that we've put in our plan. So, in some way, I may not be saying this very articulately, but we all are subservient to the land use policies that we have in here in some way. So, when Councilmember Witten is saying that this policy that we're talking about really, rather than adopting by reference, has to be subservient somehow to the land use in a way. So, are we talking something as simple as, "With council review or approval, adopt by reference"? I don't mean to wordsmith, but is that as simple as something...
No, it would be, to the extent not inconsistent or in conflict. I mean, you can adopt it. I don't have a problem with that. But you need a qualifier that said, where there is a problem between land use and whatever, and where they're not compatible policies, ours controls.
So, I mean, is that, is that something that we would not do, that you would not recommend that we do, that we add some qualifier in here? I don't care what it is. I don't want to wordsmith it, but...
Yeah, I don't want to go there and say that it's a bad idea. Just because I haven't done it before doesn't mean it's a bad idea. It might actually be a very good idea. I would like to defer to the city attorney for advice on the exact wording and your level of responsibility, not because I disagree with Councilmember Witten. I just haven't had to go down this path before. And so, if you're going to head in that direction, you want to do it carefully and do it well. I think the wording she's suggesting off the top of her head is very appealing to me. And if we were going to do that, that would be the direction that I would start with. But I'd like enough time to sit down and write it down and look at it and make sure the city attorney's okay.
Great.
Councilmember...
Jaren?
Jaren, yeah.
He's our newest council member.
Thank you, Randy. I agree with Councilmember Witten.
Just Witten.
I agree with Councilmember Jaren over at the end there. And Councilmember Keller, that really, we could do some improvement by putting some language like that in there. I think that's a good idea. Couple of questions on that. I noticed, as you said, it does say in our existing plan that it will be, the plans are adopted by reference, but it doesn't include transportation plans in the existing one, at least not in that reference you cited. And so, the question is, why are we including, for example, Sound Transit's TOD Program Strategic Plan? That's only one of Sound Transit's strategic plans. They have a ST2 and ST3. We're not adopting those by reference. Why are we adopting a six-year transit development plan for Metro, but we're not adopting the PSRC Transportation 2040 Plan? So, I think we're kind of opening a can of worms here.
I like your question. I'm going to track down those transportation people and ask them why they gave me that list.
Okay. Good. And then, the other question is, the water and sewer districts, in their comp plans, do they adopt our comp plan by reference?
That's not customary. I suppose they could. I suppose they could, but there's nothing in the Growth Management Act that requires them to. I think the point is to limit your liability exposures, Councilmember Witten has suggested, and to put yourself and your land use element in that position of primacy or centrality, so that, you know, whether they do or don't, I don't know. I just had another variation on, and this is probably not as good as yours, but just trying to think creatively. What if you adopted by reference the portions of their plan that are compliant with those four things?
That's what I suggested, too. But again, if there's a conflict, even with those, I adjusted, suggested in my memo that they look at adopting portions of it. But again, you still need a saving clause that says something to the effect of...
Yeah. Didn't mean it as an alternative, but as a supplement, that you might do both, that you'd only adopt the portions of their plan, and also they have to be compliant. And it's sort of a belt and suspenders here, trying to get to putting your, protecting your plan as much as possible. I'm sure we'll hear from the city attorney about that.
It sure would seem that, since the water and sewer districts really should be designing around our land use, that, for heaven's sakes, their comp plans should refer to our land use comp plan element as their primary point to take off from.
Yeah, I, we're at a level of detail here. I don't disagree with the concept, but for purposes of this evening's discussion, we're at a level of detail about whether or not they need to say in their plan that they've read our land use element and that they are consistent with it and that they adopt it by reference, or whether it is sufficient, whether they say that or not, for them to produce a document that is fully sufficient and compliant. I think it's the result you're looking for, as much as the wording.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others?
Councilmember Deputy Mayor Huckabee.
My only concern here is that if we have something in our plan, you know, let's say that you have to have source service, and the water district at that point is not ready to offer that, does that put us on the hook for us to provide it? So in this whole process of deciding how we're going to reference plans, I want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a position of assuming some liability, because another agency is not ready to prepare something, or is not ready to step forward and move at the same speed that we're moving, so.
I think the solution for that is more in dealing with whether or not their plan is consistent with your plan. If we're going to adopt their, a plan of theirs and we haven't read it, and it says they're not ever going to provide central sewer to us, to a septic area, or vice versa, whatever your goal is, then shame on all of us for not having, taken the time to find that out.
No, I understand that, but, for example, Sound Transit plans are dependent upon whether they pass taxes.
Right.
And so I just want to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for something that is inadvertent when we're looking at some of this language.
Point well taken, and I would like to expand it to all the rest of your public facilities, including the ones that you own or operate, because we're going to be putting, you are consistently putting in there, funding strategies which may or may not be successful. And if they're not, it doesn't mean that the whole plan is void. It means that what was the best available knowledge at the time that you adopted it and the direction you intended to go was turned down by some grant or agency who didn't give you the grant, or by the voters declining a tax initiative, or, you know, whatever issue tried to do. That's why I really take to heart the point that Deborah gave us earlier, that the reason cities are coming to slightly less prescriptive plans and directive plans is because we are not able to deliver on all those details. And so we see the plan document as more at the, not the conceptual level, but if I was, if I was to use an architectural analogy, the plan is more like the sketches and elevations of this is what the building's going to look like, and the development regulations are more like the actual blueprints of where we're going to put the exact walls and the wiring and so forth.
Okay. Thank you.
Randy, thank you. What is this rumor that you're going to retire? You can't retire, though. We still have a couple impact fees upgrade to be done before you retire, so.
It's not a rumor. Not a rumor.
Thank you for your good work on our impact fees also.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to talk a little bit about the utility element. Let me get there.
Oh, can we, we have things, I have a bunch of stuff I brought up in my memo that I want to talk about and ask questions on to staff. Is now the time, or should we wait till we get to utilities?
For capital facilities or for utilities?
Capital facilities.
Oh.
I think we should talk before we leave.
Now he wishes he retired earlier.
Well, let me see some, okay, I guess it's Deputy Mayor Huckabee. No. Nancy Witten, right. Councilmember Jaren.
Thank you. I did have a couple more questions in there. I'm not sure if this should relate to Randy or to staff. On the city-owned capital facilities, there's a table on page 100. It talks about general government services and the level of service of one square foot per capita. In our existing plan, it's a half a square foot per capita, so we've changed our comp plan by doubling that.
Correct.
Probably reflecting the fact that we've built more capital facilities and we're at closer to one. Do you think that's...
That is correct. It wasn't an accident. It was intentional. We reviewed that with staff.
And then the issue about police services, .5 officers per 1,000 now. And I notice in the whole comp plan, we're basically ignoring something that may happen by the end, end of this month, or actually, end of next week, which is an annexation vote. And once that, if that happens, this whole comp plan is out of date, before we even adopt it. There are places throughout here where we can change things to adjust for that impact.
And I'm sure the state will give you a six-month extension to catch up on that.
Ah.
Choking, sorry, just kidding. Your point's, your point's well taken. That's the problem with all planning processes, that is, they become outdated even before the ink is dry. This is a particularly dramatic one, one of great substance. It's a large area, significant change to your population and service area, so I don't mean to diminish it. But I would remind that everything we do is subject to tomorrow morning's headlines, so all we can do is our best.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
I do. But I mean, I want everybody else to go first. I put it on.
Well, nobody else is punching their buttons, so.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Memo. I want to go to proposed goal three, ensure that plan...
Can we put this page's policy documents on board as council members are talking about the different references?
Nancy, could you speak up a little? It's a little hard by the time your voice gets down in this direction.
Shirley, thank you. I'm referencing capital facilities goal three, and it says, "Ensure that planned capital facilities are financially feasible." Is it too broad, was my question.
Let's get it up on the screen first, Nancy. Just be patient for a minute, please.
One, two.
I think it's a great goal, but you use the word "ensure," and you don't say "should ensure," you don't say "shall ensure." It's a command. I mean, you know, when you're in, a parent and you're in, you learn from your education that when you give a command, you give a verb and address it to someone, and the "you" is silent in there. It's like, "Hang up your coat, please." It's "you hang up your coat," and the "you" is an elliptical silent word, and it's "understand when you do that, it's a command." So grammatically, when you have in all of these, I mean, numerous places, used word like "ensure," I think that's a great goal, but I think saying "ensure" without a verb before it makes it a command by rules of grammar, and that it should, needs to be toned down, because you may not be able to ensure it at all times. You may have to plan for these facilities, not knowing where your funding's going to be coming from.
Is this a statutory requirement for our comprehensive plan of facilities?
Yes.
RCWE-80, I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, 3678, yeah.
I think it's the law, Nancy, that the Councilmember Witten, that we have to comply with that.
Isn't the word "feasible" kind of a moving target, though, too? I mean, it's not, well, one "ensure" is more definite, "feasible" is whatever it is.
Which should be correct.
And then my next point in my memo was policy 3.5, and it's similar. Again, you're using a mandate, you're using the command, "use debt." Our policy to date, we've been very fortunate and blessed that we're almost debt-free, and that's our policy, pay-as-you-go. Now, we are getting to a point where we're going to run out of big reserves unless we raise our taxes, which we don't want to do. But I think this is too strongly worded. I'd like to, I mean, it could be interpreted as command, "use debt when the council determines it is appropriate."
Well, doesn't the "when" serve as a complete qualifier? So if you never make that determination...
It is a qualifier, but it's still a command. I mean, I think you need to tone it down. I mean, going back to the verb, "should," "shall," "may."
So in the preceding policy 3.4, should we...
Our policy is against debt right now, all right? And this is a major shift, and I don't like the major shift. I recognize that we may have to do it in the future, but I want to show, I don't want to say it's a last resort, because I think debt definitely needs to be available in the toolbox.
So do you want to say, "Don't use debt"? Or, I mean, how strong do you want it to be?
Should consider, consider debt.
Okay.
I mean, that's a qualifier. That goes back to, this is, right now, a command. It's "use debt," and I grant you, it is qualified. On the other hand, I think, because it reverses our current policy, and I don't personally feel that we should be reversing our personal policy, I think we need to have it available. But I don't think the policy should be to "use debt." I think the policy should be not to "use debt," and to use something softer, because we are getting to the point where we may have to use debt. I think we need to have something softer, like, "Consider the use of debt." It seems...
I want this thing to be council motions, because if I have seven council members doing editing and making changes, I'm just trying to get some sort of orderly context to this. Would you like us to put this in some sort of a council motion at the time?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't. You know, what we did before, and it worked well, is we had preliminary discussions, and then we gave a thumbs up or down on whether we, they should come back with some language we should consider. So we did the preliminary discussion before we got, I mean, I have, if I go back to land use and I start my detailed thing of it, which I haven't been able to do, you would be doing 100 different things, probably, or more.
I'm trying to be helpful to you, Nancy. What would you like to do?
I would like to have a, I mean, we found a consensus, I think, on the incorporation by reference, that we need to amend that somehow, at least have our attorney look at it. I think that's definitely something you wouldn't come back on, just based on me. It's a legal issue, too, I think, that needs to be looked at. Here, I think it's a policy issue. It's a change, substantive change in policy. And I think we need to have that preliminary discussion, and a preliminary heads-up or down, do you want, does the council want to see staff come back with something? I mean, that's how we've done all of our other lengthy documents. Otherwise, you're just deferring everything, and it just seems like we'd be spinning wheels.
You know, on the basis of what you've been saying earlier and offering suggestions, I've taken notes about the business of speaking to the attorney about that language, and I would could certainly take under advisement, counsel comment, take a look at the language. I am more than happy to do that. You clearly pay a great deal of attention to the language and are quite skilled at it, so I'm a little surprised that you take this as so directive. If it said, "Jump in the pool when there's water in the deep end," you wouldn't say it meant "jump in the pool."
I take it as a directive, because it's reversing an existing policy.
So I would jump in the pool.
No. The debt, our maxim right now is, "Don't use debt."
That's fine.
I mean, it's a maxim, and this is reversing that, and I want to reverse it very softly.
But we actually have used debt in the past.
But it's a last resort.
But this is when the council determines. I mean, it seems to me that it's so qualified that, because the council can decide to use debt at any point along the way.
Plus, it also has the qualifier, "When it's appropriate to enable early completion of a project." So it's not saying, "Go out and use debt for every project." It's, it's saying that if we have the money and we, rather than using our reserve, we use debt because we can get it done earlier, or we don't have to wait for four years of tax collections. It seems like it's so qualified, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to discuss this any further. I'm very comfortable with it.
If we're parsing words a little bit too much here, in some cases.
Well, I'm suggesting we add the word "consider."
The way I see it is, the preceding parts of CF3, ahead of this particular section, set it a hierarchy of how you do things. And CF3.5 is kind of a last resort, and that is, if you need to get something done, it's okay to go borrow. Frankly, if that wasn't the case, we'd still be building 228th on a pay-as-you-go basis.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, let's, is there, I mean, personally, I'm happy with the language like it is, because Tom has suggested that there is a hierarchy of ideas here. Do we have any consensus to make a change here? No. Okay. You have another one? You have another question?
Yes, I do. This is a more general thing. What about stormwater facilities? I mean, that is a completely city-owned, and I didn't see them covered here or in the, I mean, not in any depth.
Deborah, are stormwater facilities in the utilities element?
There are, but I don't, they lost a lot, it seems to me, from the original plan on stormwater.
Let's wait until we get to that.
That's where you would talk about it, rather than in the capital facilities element, however.
Well, really, because a lot of it's capital facilities. We're spending multi-millions to build these things.
Well, the same would be true of transportation, but transportation has its own set of goals and policies, and we don't load all of them into the capital facilities element.
Okay.
Councilmember Odell, you have more?
No, I made my point.
All right, are we all done, then? Okay, any further questions? Capital facilities?
I'm going to retire for the evening.
You're going to retire again?
Just for the evening.
Thank you.
Better get out the door.
Thank you, Randy.
I think it's okay.
Okay. Onto utilities.
Okay, onto utilities. Can you hear me?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds like a commercial.
I'm doing utilities. All right. The utilities element, just real, real high level, addresses electrical service, telecommunication, natural gas, doesn't say it up there, but also water and sewer. The kind of main topic is to make sure there's adequate service for a current population and forecast growth. And because much of this is done by non-city providers, there was consultation with all the service providers as we proceeded. This is the list of goals that are in the plan, the draft plan, right now. So again, kind of parallels, to some extent, some of what Randy was talking about, but the first one is utilities at a level of service adequate to serve existing population and projected growth. Another one to address minimizing cost and service disruption. A new-ish policy that talks about, or goal that talks about supporting community character, promoting uninterrupted service. And then you see the fourth goal there, which is really a list of adjectives, and this came from the Planning Commission discussion of what's really important in our services. So you see consistent, reliable, equitable, competitive, financially sustainable. And then the fifth goal is talking about just recognizing that there are a lot of technological changes, and so encouraging and supporting innovative measures and new technology that may enhance service or reduce demand, and then conserving water and protecting The supporting analysis that's in volume two, this is just a quick rundown of what we discussed, or what's discussed in the supporting analysis. So Puget Sound Energy, the pipeline, cable, water and sewer district, and then waste, solid waste services. So policy guidance that's carried forward in the plan, from the existing plan to the draft plan, is goals and policies that address providing adequate levels of service, using franchise agreements to achieve city goals. franchise agreements to achieve city goals, coordination and consultation with utility providers, minimizing disruption and supporting co-location of services, undergrounding facilities, providing high-quality telecommunication services, and supporting the idea of reduced energy demand and enhanced service. New policies, policy guidance that's in the, in the plan in this 2015 draft, minimizing visual impacts of telecommunication. That's in there in a very specific way that I'll talk about in a minute, in the current plan. There's a more generalized policy in the 2015 update. Promoting, this is the idea of getting multiple uses out of different facilities. So promoting recreational use of utility corridors. Looking to support compatibility with community and community character. Supporting competitive rates and efficient service. New policies related to water conservation and sewer connections. And then again, new technologies that could enhance service or reduce demand. Specific policy guidance that was not carried forward relates to electromagnetic fields, EMF, I think it's policy, or goal six in the current plan. I don't have that right in front of me. There was some very detailed siting and development guidance in the current plan for personal wireless facilities. And that all has been implemented. It's incorporated into city code and development standards. So it is no, that level of detail is no longer there. But as I referenced earlier, there is general policy support in the plan that talks about community compatibility and reducing visual impacts for wireless facilities. And then solid waste. We talked about solid waste with the planning commission as part of the utility review, and ultimately decided to incorporate the solid waste goal and policy in the environment and conservation element because the primary thrust of the policy guidance related to recycling, policy guidance for recycling of solid waste. And I guess that was, that's the high-level overview. Happy to.
You want questions now? Okay, line up. Councilmember Jaren.
Thank you. I was looking at volume two, the backup data. And on page five of the, of the utilities section, oh, and incidentally, I'd like to suggest that maybe volume two could be numbered sequentially rather than starting over in each section because it's confusing.
The page numbering?
So on page five, where we talk about telecommunications, we have several paragraphs. One is entitled telecommunications. The next one, telecommunications cable. Well, the first one really is telecommunications wireless. And the second one's cable, but they talk about a fiber backbone. Really, what's happening is that the copper wire, copper wire telecommunications is on the way out, is being replaced by Internet protocol. And so fiber becomes, it's more than just cable. Ultimately, we'll have fiber networks without cable. And telecommunications, indeed, telephone will be wireless. But somewhere in our comp plan, we should talk about protecting our residents who, right now, are dependent on a landline. And AT&amp;T, for example, is already experimenting in the south, in Florida and Alabama, I think, in a couple of towns by removing their landlines. And then they're seeing what, what problems they have and then do the mitigation. So this is like, as I mentioned before, the transition from to digital television. We have to protect the residents as we do this.
So that's a, that's a good suggestion, and that's something we can build into requests, subject to any other conversation from the council.
General consensus, follow in previous discussions?
Update the discussion?
Yeah.
Any more?
Oh, I do.
Oh, for me?
Yeah.
Time's up.
Well, yeah, in UT 2.2, which is on page 78, it talks about promo, co-location of new public and private utility distribution facilities in shared trenches.
Can we get that page on the screen, please?
While you're trying to do that, I would suggest in addition, besides shared trenches, we want co-location on above-ground facilities, for example, like telephone poles. Because right now, when Verizon talked about putting fiber in our city, they intended to string a lot of it from pole to pole above ground. And then in policy.
Which one? I'm sorry, which one was the first one?
That was 2.2.
2.2 there, in the middle of the screen, right now.
Shared trenches, yes.
And in 4.5, it says encourage, that's on page 79, encourage expansion of bandwidth and speed of telecommunications services. I'm not sure you really want to say expansion. You might say increase of bandwidth and speed. And actually, speed is used interchangeably with bandwidth nowadays. Bandwidth refers to the quantity of data you download or upload per second, which is, in essence, speed also, although the technicians from Microsoft might tell us that, well, speed really has to do with how rapidly you react, especially when you're playing games perhaps. So I would, you know, I'd be okay with just speed or bandwidth either.
Okay. And increase instead of expand?
Yeah. And then in policy 5.2.
Is the way the council is okay with this?
Unless you object, we're gonna.
Okay. This one we might get some objections to.
We're all listening.
On 5.2, it talks about wind-powered turbines, removing barriers to wind-powered turbines. I've seen a couple in Seattle that really are intrusive to the neighborhood, I might say.
And the birds.
And noisy and vibrating.
And so I just do not have that in there. I'm not sure how.
I would support that.
I object to it because there, there is a firm in Issaquah that's developing a home-sized wind turbine. I do think that in certain areas of the community, I don't like to eliminate these alternatives. They're growing, they're reaching into other communities. There was yet another community today that announced, a Texas community, that's going off all oil resources, all fossil fuels, and going to wind and solar. Obviously, they have more wind than we do. But there are places in our community that, with increasing technology and the ability to design more attractive, single-home features like that, I wouldn't want to take it out of our comp plan. I don't foresee that anybody's going to walk in and want to build one of those great big wind turbines. That's usually on public property. But again, I don't want to eliminate the opportunity for us.
I wonder if instead of using the word turbines, we might have wind-powered energy sources or something like that.
Yeah, maybe stop it.
My concern is, my concern is it says remove barriers in the city code. I don't think we should remove barriers.
Right.
I don't, I don't say that we disallow them. But if you go down to the Funtleroy Ferry, on the way down the hill, there was a wind turbine in the front yard of a house. And it was terrible, terribly intrusive. So certainly, we can allow them, but within the barriers that we put in our regulations.
And I would very, be very comfortable with that because we'll have an opportunity to look at the regulations as they go in, which are the regulations that will determine whether we allow them or not. So rather than barring them here, I'd rather look at that.
I'd like to just say that, the way this is worded, since it's saying.
You want to use your microphone?
Yes. Saying, since it's saying including such technologies as, really, we can remove wind-powered turbines, and this does not exclude wind-powered turbines from being in there. It doesn't matter, in a way, if it's in or not.
I think we're all here for the discussion we had over the cell phone towers and the intrusive effects of that. I'm about to invest, you know, 1,500 bucks or so to build a fence between my neighbor and myself because he has a heat pump I can hear all over the house. The, these renewable things are very attractive from the standpoint of getting us off the, off the carbon cycle here. However, they, they all have downsized, I mean, hydro is a renewable energy source, but it chops up salmon big time. The wind turbines in eastern Washington have killed a whole bunch of birds. They are noisy. So before we just adopt this wholesale, I think this needs some significant work.
I, excuse me, can I, I didn't understand what Bob said and didn't hear what he said.
What I'm saying is, this is just an example. Wind-powered turbines is just an example. These are all examples of the power that they, they want to promote.
No, it's saying remove barriers.
So if, yeah, but what I'm saying is, it's not excluding anything. There could be 10 other technologies that aren't listed here, that it's removing the barriers for those as well.
Because we're saying such as.
Such as, exactly.
But you said to take it off.
And if you take it off, it doesn't matter. It can still be, it could still be brought into the city.
It says that you can remove the barrier.
No, what I was saying is, if you took wind-powered turbines off, even if that was scratched off, it's still available, based on this.
For consideration, but not encouraged. Yeah.
Is I not following you? Because what I'm seeing here, it says remove barriers in the city code, and if we're not going to remove barriers to win.
For alternative energy sources.
No, no, to wind-powered turbine.
Wind turbines is just one example.
Such as, so this is just.
So you're saying that if you strike that.
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't change the meaning.
Okay, so it's only an example?
Okay, I'll, can I, can I make a suggestion? Use the word suitable someplace. Remove all the specifics. For the use of alternative energy sources for homes and businesses were suitable because, or if suitable. And then just strike everything else, and then you don't need to, it would include all alternative energy sources, and you've eliminated the, it looks like you're promoting these specific things, which I don't think we want to do with turbines. But we don't necessarily want to exclude them. So if you're just silent on what they are, then they would be encompassed in the general.
Is that something that the staff could work with?
I think so. Yeah, regarding the first part in removing barriers, removing barriers in city codes, we could look at something a little bit different, like develop codes, develop city codes.
More positive.
And then to Councilmember Witten's suggestion, for the use of suitable energy sources for homes and businesses.
Sounds good.
Maybe throw in the idea of new technologies in there somewhere.
Compatible with the community character, something, you know, because solar.
Can you work on that, wordsmith that?
Yep.
We need to discuss these so we get consensus.
Councilmember Jaren, that's it. Next is Councilmember Odell.
Okay, thank you. Under goals and policies UT1, you can go back to that. A little more. Keep going, keep going. Okay. Where it says promote and encourage development and maintenance of all utilities at levels, et cetera, up in the main goal, I would take out the words promote and encourage and assert the single word ensure, because I think we have a responsibility to the community to provide this, not just promote and encourage it.
Well, we're not the provider in all cases.
Be sure they're there, you can't live there.
Well, we also have partners on some of these issues, too, so.
Exactly. We don't control a number of these areas.
A good number, though.
Not all.
If I can comment on that, because I worked in Bellevue for many years. And Bellevue has completely inadequate power to manage, for example, the computers, so they always ran slow. I wouldn't want to have ensure here that would imply that if we had that similar circumstance that we would have to step in and fix the problem, because it's not our problem. So I'm much more comfortable with the promote and encourage.
To me, Kathy, that's still too weak.
Demand?
Yeah. We can't demand, that's the problem.
Stop paying the bills till they do? I don't know.
Well, I don't know. But, you know, I think as a city, we have a responsibility to ensure this stuff is around that, available, and that it works.
I, I think it's also true that the customers will, too. And if the utility, whatever it is, isn't, isn't providing the services that customers want, the city doesn't need to do anything for them to get the heat, get some heat, you know, from, from the folks who live here.
Tom, I'd like to agree with you, but we've had a few examples lately where that hasn't happened.
You know, I.
The trials, an example.
We can't ensure some of them, Tom.
We can't.
Okay, but my point is, I think that needs some thought. I'm going to move on to the bottom of UT1 and suggest the fifth one.
Are you okay with the, leaving the goal UT1 the way it is?
Do we have any consensus for changing that one?
I just want to.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Bless you.
Okay. I guess just a UT1.5. Execute a plan to provide stormwater and sewer access to legacy developments. In other words, where we don't have wells, where, I mean, where we're on wells and we're using septic, that we develop a plan to get these neighborhoods off them, particularly as the infill occurs, where this could be problematic. I'm thinking of.
Which one is this, what are we looking at here again? I'm suggesting.
UT1.5.
He's suggesting a new one.
UT1.5 on the screen. It would be a new policy, is what he's suggesting.
That's right.
I'm just trying to search this thing. New one, thank you, Tom.
Any thought on that from staff?
I think that's something we can, we can definitely add in. Councilmember Odell, do you have specific language written down that you could forward to us?
I could forward to.
That would be great.
When we do that, go under your next point.
I'm thinking of Lewis Thompson and areas like that, as an example. On 3.4, just a thought on this one, when we get to it. I agree with this, however, there are places where we probably don't want them recreating. And what comes to mind is the Williams Pipeline right away, where if we have a bunch of people playing out there, it might not be a good idea if something happens.
Can I add something that's, that's interesting for me, because of this list that was presented? I have this highlighted myself, and I, I'm referring, is this a shall? Because it's kind of, how, how strong is promote? And now, looking at this, that's a should. That doesn't mean you have to do that. That would be the equivalent to what's being stated.
Allow or something, but.
Yeah, obviously, we, we can't do something that's dangerous, so I don't know if our codes preclude that.
They already have the recreational facilities over a lot of the pipeline up east, off of northeast, southeast eighth. If you look at it, they've got courts and parking lots and everything else. I mean, you better take the basic assumption that it's safe enough to walk on, park on, and not explode, or, or you better get rid of it.
Nancy, earlier this week, I spent four hours with a bunch of my friends from the National League Transportation Infrastructure Committee. And what we talked about was pipeline safety. And that got me thinking when I read this, that maybe this is something we ought to take another look at, just how much of this do we want to have happen? Because it increases the potential we're damaging the pipeline.
Can we have a where appropriate, promote recreational use of, I mean, appropriate, bring, bring, you know, obviously, issues like safety? Is that okay?
That's all I have.
That's all you got? Okay. Councilmember Keller.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Odell, because that was actually one of my highlighted questions on here. Just a random comment that I would make is first, is it appropriate to have some kind of emergency disaster policy here? I'm just reading through all of this, of how important it is. I don't know where it's appropriate in the plan somewhere, but that, that just seems like it would fit to me.
We have a policy for, for that. Policy, we have a plan. The state law requires us, outside of this, is, requires city of some damage to have the emergency preparedness plan.
Okay, I just, I just wanted, because I was going through this.
You can get your copy.
Exactly. I wanted to go to something, it's so rare that I catch something like this on page five of the appendix, or the part two in utilities.
That's a Jaren.
Yeah, actually, Don Jaren was going all around this.
How did he miss this?
Let me read something. It says, it's under telecommunications cable. Maybe I'm reading this incorrectly, but the first sentence, Comcast currently provides video and high-speed data cable services to approximately residential customers. Approximately, is there something that's missing? Thank you, yes, there's.
Thank you. Yes, there's a number missing there that needs to be inserted.
Good catch.
Additional to make sure that you guys are reading that.
Well, obviously, Jaren wasn't reading that one.
Well, he was slacking. We knew that.
He took her coffee, Bert.
Anything further? Okay.
Nancy is raising her hand.
Well, we've, we've got a lineup here. Councilmember Valderrama.
Well, they stole a lot of my thunder, so I hope I take some of Nancy's here as, as we go forward. I just have three items. First one, Goal UT1 talks about the level of services. Again, looking at levels of service is adequate to accommodate existing and projected growth. And then Policy UT13 talks about, again, ensuring coordination with the water and sewer plans. So I'm assuming that we will be working with them, with all of these different providers, to have an agreement on what the level of services will be. That said, when you look at the capital facilities, the amount of gallons per person from our two water districts are different. So they're not aligned. And so we need to make sure that those level of services, and it goes back to my earlier comment, to make sure that we have some sort of similar vision and direction amongst all of these different service providers, particularly when we're dealing with the water and sewers here. The second point that I have.
Do you hear? Or just, you just want to make a, highlight the point that we may have to do?
Highlight that point.
Okay, thank you.
The one that I'd like to do a change on is in a number of places here, and particularly in the earlier slide that was given in your presentation, I believe you had put in conserve water. And instead of the conserve the water, since we don't control the water, it's a, we may want to put in encourage conservation of water because that's not directly under our purview.
Okay, so that.
Which one is that?
Goal UT6 up on the screen there.
Yes, that's correct.
Encourage conservation.
Building codes where we, where we use gray water or, you know, all of that sort of stuff.
Encourage because it's across the board that we're working with them. Council, is it okay with that, those suggestions? The other piece, just a question that I have, is we have gotten a couple of maps here on the water distribution networks and the sewer distribution, the sanitary sewer system maps that you had provided to us. And I assume that both these are a compilation from both water districts. So are they feeding directly and coordinating with our GIS system? Or how is this data pulled together?
I don't have a public works director here, but I do have a utilities engineers here. So Jay, you want to just answer that question for us? I know that our GIS person has provided our base mapping that includes our water and sewer facilities to the city's GIS. They are coordinated. They're, they're coordinating that. I'm not, I mean, it changes daily. So you're getting a snapshot.
Yeah, so I know we put a number, quite a bit of money into our GIS system, and I know that they have their GIS systems. And so are we getting that direct feed that they're passing us the discs or the information that we can read?
Councilmember Valderrama, yes, we got this data directly from the Water and Sewer District. And now we have it as part of our own GIS database system. So that's correct. And we did it for both, both Water and Sewer Districts.
Incidentally, when I look at the maps, Councilmember Valderrama, may I take ten seconds to insert something here?
All right, all right. I'm timing you.
North and South Districts have actually inner tie, isn't it? And then you actually mix the waters at that inner tie locations. We have inner ties in, at the active inner tie believes at Northeast 16th, just north of Margaret Mead. We share a three million gallon tank up in the. Northeast 12 place, Inglewood Glen. Yes, I know that tank. Area. And so that's Northeast Summamish and ourselves, a portion of our system and their system. So what is this assertion that we've been hearing that the North District water is not chlorinated? If in fact, they're mixed, how is that possible?
Before she answers, can we somehow get, make sure it's just on the record?
Sure.
So it'll be part of the minutes.
I follow up on that one, Jay. Thank you.
Either she come to speak to the microphone.
Could you please come?
And then it'll be part of our minutes. So that would, because that's, that's an important point.
Here, so we're going to take advantage of that, Jay. So introduce yourself, your, your address and name, please.
Okay, Jay Regan Strife, 1510 to 28th Avenue Southeast. And yes, I live there.
And you have an inner tie with the North District, right?
Right. So we have an inner tie with Northeast Summamish. We actually have a couple of inner ties. There's one that's free flowing. Our, and you're right, their system, they use, I wouldn't say that they use no chlorine, but they certainly use minimal chlorine. We have our system segregated into two different sections on, in the plateau area. And part of it is chlorinated and fluoridated. And that area also receives water from the regional system, which is also chlorinated and fluoridated. So we keep a consistent level of, we chlor- chlorinate for disinfection and we fluoridate to keep that at a consistent level. In the area that we share with Northeast that's served by the three million gallon tank, we have some chlorination that's used at a lower level as part of the aesthetic treatment that we do to remove manganese and iron from the water that's coming out of some of those wells. But it's at a, it's at a fairly low level. It's not maintained for disinfection. So that's the, the big difference. And that area does not get any of the regional water.
But you do have an inner tie at the other location that's close to the Summamish. What is that park? 216th Avenue.
Yeah, at Margaret Mead, we have an inner tie that's free flowing. We also have one in the Green Acres subdivision, but that one is not currently free flowing. We can open it up and it would be free flowing as well, but we're currently primarily.
Free flowing is that water is going both ways.
Flows both directions. So their wells pump into the tank, our wells pump into the tank, and the waters are commingled.
So what is this assertion that that water in North District is not chlorinated? How is that possible if you have inner tie, water is flowing freely both ways?
At the, at some of our, at our well four treatment facility, we have a lot of different pipes and valves so that we can treat to different levels. And so we don't chlorinate for disinfection for the water that goes north out of there, but we do for the water that goes south. And we don't fluoridate for the water that goes north, but we do for the water that goes south.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Witten.
It's still going on, so I just.
No, no, I only gave you the 10 seconds because I finished.
Let's remember Witten.
Okay, one of my questions has been answered. That's the one on electromagnetic elimination policy, a policy eliminated. So I'm looking at UT6 and Policies 6.2 and 3. For UT6, I have no change there. But reading the Policies 6.2 and 3 in light of that. I wonder if they're too strong. Seems to me. We've had historically a few situations where, well, in one case, a tragedy happened, a house burned down. And the Water District wanted to require them, as I recall, to convert to, from septic to sewer. The only thing left that was functioning was their septic system. In other cases, the Water District has on occasion wanted a main line sewer connection for something that like dead ends by a lake or something. So where, also where you have constrained lands and you have zoning, for example, that's R1, you may prefer to have septic to sewer. So I, as a general proposition, I think 6.2 and 3 are quite valid. It's just like the one on, over time, encouraging them, anybody to go from a well to a hook up for water if it's available. But I'm thinking on a permanent basis, you may want some situations, like the R1 zoning or in constrained areas, to stay on septic. Septic, when I asked, for example, the water quality expert when I was appealing the project back in the mid 90s, who later became one of the authors of the Surface Water Manual, and was the one who designed sand filters for the city, the policy anyway, was his baby. And we got it through an appeal. He said that septic systems are the best way to treat phosphorus because they're designed, they have a field. So they take out so many of the nutrients and pollutants. The problem is when there's not maintained or when the soil gives out. But I do think when you have sensitive areas, large lots, you may not be able to develop at all if you limit them to sewers because you don't want big sewer lines running in certain locations. So I think we need to refine this just a little bit to recognize that there are some exceptional circumstances. And I remember having conversations with Ben and other council members at, at meetings. We just couldn't understand where the Water District was coming from, especially like the lady where the house had burned down.
There was another example to amplify the point that it was in a, not that the Water District was doing it wrong. It just was difficult to implement the policy. So Councilmember Witten is right, we need to put something here. In this example, on Parkway, it was almost 10 acre parcel with one home on it. And clearly, there was a huge area to be able to expand the septic to, this was a remodel of existing home. The cost of extending sanitary sewer for that project was cost prohibitive. So she's absolutely right. We need to put something here that, so we don't just make blanket statement that everybody must connect to sanitary sewer. So there needs to be some common sense.
Are you comfortable with making a qualifier there somehow?
I'm thinking at the end, where appropriate. Just adding at the end, where appropriate. I don't know if that makes it too, too weak, but that might address what there was.
Something along those lines, where there's a hardship or in other circumst- unusual circumstances where it's appropriate.
Well, we can definitely come up with a qualifier for that. My, Mayor, if I may, my quick clarifying question, just going back to, Councilmember Odell wanted to add a new UT 1.5. Was your new policy addition substantially different than what's here in 62 and 63, the language that you were thinking of? Or is this actually maybe.
One is water and this is sewer. This is water.
Well, I was dealing with stormwater.
Oh.
And sewer, well, sewer both, but.
You did mention sewer as well there. The legacy developments with septic, I think, so. Do you want us to break those apart in UT 1.5?
Jeff, let me work on reconciling all that.
I, again, I have a couple more things. Hopefully, they're quick. Where's fire? Where's level of service and other things for fire, facilities for fire? I mean, I know we didn't adopt their plans.
It's in the capital.
Pardon me?
It was in the capital section.
Capital facilities.
We didn't adopt their plan. We adopted everybody else's plan. Do they have a plan?
I don't know if they have a real land use.
They don't have a, they don't have a plan.
I think. I think you need to skim through these chapters and see if we've adequately addressed the goals for fire and the levels of service. And same thing with stormwater. We have such opportunities with stormwater to, to get water quality. Maybe it's in the environmental section. I haven't gotten there, to there yet.
Yeah, yes, that's correct. Stormwater is, we consolidate it all in the environment and conservation element.
You know, you might make a note here. I mean, I.
We do have that sidebar box there that talks about guidance for environmental quality and conservation in the, in the other element. We can certainly clarify that and really point to stormwater more clearly.
Yeah, good. Hang on a minute, just a moment. I think I'm almost done. I had a question for you. Telecommunications refers to cable, telephone, Wi-Fi.
Yes.
All of the wired and unwired.
Yes.
Okay, I think if I have another one, I'll email it to you.
Deputy Mayor Huckabee.
Thank you. Yes, and I'm going to drive to a point or two in the UT6, the goal. And I'm going to disagree a bit with Councilmember Valderrama. I think in terms of, if our wells ran dry, no one is going to go to the Water Districts and say, why did you let the wells run dry? They're going to come to the city. So in terms of conserving water from the wells, I think we have to take, we have to.
Can we not have the sidebars? Thank you.
I think in terms of recognizing that the water coming out of the wells, and we don't want the wells to run dry, that we have some responsibility for that. I think we also have a concern about excess water running into the ground and going under the ground and perhaps acting similar to stormwater and creating those impacts. We also have the issue of how do individuals learn how to conserve water, or how do they know how to conserve water? And I'm going to go, I'm going to really compliment the Water District and also say that we've learned a lot of lessons from them in the, personally, in the last couple of months that have really had an impact on how I look at this. I think you know, we woke up one morning with no water. And we learned that there's a very large area here in the community where the water pipes that were installed are inadequate. And we did not know that those pipes, that pipe was breaking over the, because nobody was monitoring the use of the water. So that was a lot of excess water coming out of the ground, out of the wells. A lot of excess water running into the grounds and going down into our, we live in the erosion hazard zone. And so that's where our water is draining. We also have learned subsequent to that, with a lot of help from the Water District who put a meter on the house, that we have low-flow toilets, but they leak constantly. We didn't know that. You don't hear the sound. And they call them the killer toilets. And so I want, would like to see us work more closely with the Water Districts, perhaps even require a new development, that we put in meters so that the water can be metered and the individual homeowner can know, understand, monitor their water so they can help us conserve the water. I would like to work with the Water Districts to coordinate how we install those in current homes throughout the community. Because we were using probably twice as much water as we needed to, most of which was going into the ground and not even getting to the house. So I think from the interest that we have in terms of the wells, in terms of the excess water running, and in terms of helping people help themselves to conserve water, that I'd like to see two policies, one of which is in the development code to install those meters. And the second would be, we, we can't, I don't believe we can require the Water District as much as I would like to, to go out and put them in every house. But I think we can work with them to encourage them to move that process forward a little bit more quickly.
Anything else? Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, I am concerned about the usage of some of the wording. Everybody's concerned about the wells not running dry, but that's not our purview directly. That's their purview while we're concerned about the garbage, and we're concerned about telecommunications and other things that are taking place here, as we've talked about. We have to be careful to mine and respect the lines and avenues that they're in. Also, in coordinating the meters, while I support the ideas of the meters, again, I don't believe that's in our purview to go for. I think that's too many details that have to be worked out. And you had talked about coordinating the implementation of these in the homes. Again, I don't believe, while we can encourage those meters, I don't believe we should be involved in coordinating implementation. I think it's encouraging them and doing it.
I think we want to encourage the Water Districts to do that, but we can also put it into our development code to require it. That is in our purview.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the coordination of the implementation. That's the part that I get nervous about.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, I think we should be coordinating with the Water Districts for them to implement that policy. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Back to the deputy mayor, just for a moment. I was starting to pick up and made a note, but then you, you went towards the meters. Were you also looking for policy, the, policy language, excuse me, maybe to participate or support education efforts for conservation of water as well?
I think that would be wonderful because we didn't realize Cicely, is that the correct name, Jay? Your employee?
Chick.
Chick?
Chick, C-H-I-C.
Okay. He came out and showed us how we. He came out and showed us how we could read the meter, when, so that we could go down there when nothing was running in the house. And so now we have a policy of doing that. We recognize we have another leak in one of our other low-flow toilets. But it's silent and it's not working, you know? So we can now understand and we're educated enough so that we can monitor ourselves as well. And I, you know, as we talk to the people in the neighborhood, nobody else understands that. So an education program would be very helpful.
So Will, staff can draft something up for council's consideration when this comes back then regarding that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments, I guess? We're going to go to the next issue, which is solid waste contract. Why don't we take a quick break while you reset over there at the desk and take five to 10 minutes, I guess? Thank you.
And thank you, all of you. You guys did a great job today. Thank you.
Okay. Let's get started again. Next up is our discussion of solid waste contract. Mr. City Manager.
This is not a new topic. We already came to you in the study session. We got your input. So our administrative services director, Ms. Beth Goldberg, is just simply reaffirming with you what you said and what's been included in the package. Ms. Goldberg?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is a brief summary, it should look very familiar to you and sound familiar to you because as the city manager indicated, this is reaffirming the policy direction that we heard from all of you about a month ago when we last talked trash, so to speak. So by way of background, our solid waste contracts expire on December 31, 2016. Last September, September 2014, council passed unanimously Resolution 2014-596, which basically directed us to go with a cost-based competitive bidding process to procure our next solid waste contract. The information I am going to present here is basically reaffirming what we heard at the March 16 Committee of the Hall meeting. So the first item that we talked about at that meeting in terms of policy direction was whether to offer bear-resistant carts to our customers. And council indicated their desire that we do offer these carts to residents. So the draft RFB does contain provisions for bear-resistant carts. This is an optional service and they will be provided on a cost-of-service basis, not a subsidized basis. On recycling, we talked about several items, first of which was the frequency of collections. And as you are all aware, we have different frequency of collections in the city now. North of Inglewood Hill Road is every other week. South of Inglewood Hill Road is weekly. And council directed us to secure in our next contract, weekly recycling collections throughout the city. So that is in the draft RFB. In terms of types of recyclables that would be collected, council expressed a desire to continue to offer the same basic mix of recyclable materials, pickup of recyclable materials, as is currently offered. And then expressed an interest in having as a pricing alternative, an expanded list of recyclable materials. So both of those are featured in the draft bid. In terms of the types of recyclables, the expanded types, it will be up to the haulers who are responding to select which mix they feel is most appropriate for their service capabilities. In terms of compostables, council expressed an interest to keep the frequency of collections same as what is offered today. And that is weekly service, March through November, and every other week, December through February. And they also, you also expressed an interest to see as a pricing alternative, what it would look like to go to every other, or, I'm sorry, weekly service, December through February. So the RFB, the draft RFB, does ask bidders to submit proposals that would offer the current collection frequency in their base bid and then a pricing alternative to increase the service weekly, December through February. In terms of how to charge customers for compostable service, we talked about whether to make this an optional service, as is currently the case, or to embed the cost of the service in the basic garbage fee. And council indicated its desire to continue to have this be an optional service, so the cost would not be embedded in the basic garbage cost. And so that is what we have reflected in the base bid, in the bid documents. We are asking, and this is again based on council direction, a willingness or an interest in seeing what it would cost to have the, the cost of the service embedded in the, in the base, or in the base garbage cost, sorry, I'm mumbling my words there. So we've got both of those components featured in the draft RFB. In terms of rate methodology, council expressed an interest to retain the current cost-of-service methodology. This is in contrast to a linear methodology, which would artificially lower the cost of some service and inflate the cost of other service. Council decided it did not want to do that, wanted to stick with the current cost-of-service basis. So that is what we are asking the bidders to do. And then we talked about several other miscellaneous provisions that we were considering putting in the bid documents. And council expressed an interest in having the bids include performance monitoring provisions, or the contract include performance monitoring provisions, enhanced implement weather provisions, community contribution expectations, and administrative fee to cover the cost of administering the contract. So based on that direction, we've got all of these components featured in the bid documents. In terms of next steps, and this is reflective of what we discussed at the, at the last meeting as well, staff intends to share with the industry draft, the draft RFB for their input. And we intend to get the draft RFB out to the industry within the next week. They will have two weeks from the date of receipt of the draft RFBs to provide us feedback in writing. The city manager will also offer to meet with the haulers if they're interested as well. And just to remind you, we gave the haulers a similar opportunity to meet with the city manager earlier this year. Staff will compile the written feedback that we receive from the haulers into a written document, and that written document will form the basis for evaluating whether we need to make revisions to the draft RFB. Once that process concludes, we expect to have the final RFB on the street, so to speak, in early June, with bids due back to us September 1, and a new contract awarded by the end of 2015. And that concludes my presentation.
And again, this is not a significant amount of time at the study session, it's just basically confirming with you that what you told us, and we'll be affirming that to be included in the documents.
Councilmember Valdorama?
Yeah, a couple of questions in the miscellaneous provisions. The community contributions expectation section, can you walk me through what that entails? Because when we were originally talking about, we have the different haulers have been providing community services here. What is this now? How is this going to work under this expectation contribution?
So the expectation lays out a minimum community contribution of $20,000. And it could be in the form of support for community events. It could be in the form of scholarships to students in the community. It's fairly open-ended in terms of what the awardee would, how they would choose to, to make the contribution, but it does set a dollar limit. And then name some examples of things that they can consider.
And if I may add to that, thank you, Beth, for your comments on that. Where that $20,000 came from? This was actually the Republic Services, that they were saying that they would provide services, they have been doing it for the community. And they wanted to make sure that there's a level playing field that everybody does that too. I think in my meeting with Beth, with Republic, I asked, what is the value, dollar value of that? And they came up with $20,000 roughly. Is that?
I believe it was $12,000, but.
Okay. So we use that number as the basis to put the $20,000 base price for everybody.
Yeah, sounds applicable to me.
Well, the only problem I have with that, I guess, is twofold. On one hand, each provider could have provided more, or in the past, now they have a max of $20,000.
No, they can provide to $200,000. There's no limit. We're just simply putting the $20,000 to even the field.
But before we inhabit in, and so what I'm wondering, how is this different from doing a health and human services grant to the winner for $20,000 to do community services? Because you're now building it into the city contract.
There are a number of ways to skin this cat. I mean, one of them is, we're simply trying to address the one hauler's concern. And that hauler's concern was, look, I am part of the community, I'm involved with the community, I contribute a lot of stuff to the community. And we want to make sure that the others who are participating in this bid process make the same commitment. And that's where that, this particular provision came into it.
Well, I understand the purpose. I just see it as, in effect, we're giving a $20,000 health and human services grant for community services, to whoever wins. So I think we may want to revisit that to take a look at how that's done. I'm not following.
I'm not following either. I think it's the other way around.
Everybody has to have $20,000 in their bid to the city for community services, whichever way they utilize it, whatever mechanism, whether it's scholarships, working at Sam Amish Knights. How is that, we've just upped that line item for community service, $20,000? If you just took that out of their bids and didn't have that in there, to get them to do it, it would be the same as us saying, we will give you, because it's still coming out of our taxpayers, a health and human services grant of $20,000.
Actually, $12,000 is already being done. So it's not a $20,000 increase, an $8,000 increase maybe.
But the principle of that. So that's why I said, I think we have to revisit and tweak that.
How would you like to tweak it? Because we're going out the street, we're moving fast on this thing. Any suggestion, Ramiro?
No, I think you go back to the haulers and ask them if they have suggestions to go through, or do we look at taking that out and then they provide it and then we actually go through some mechanism?
That's a good suggestion, actually. We're going to go to industry, ask their feedback, so we'll get that feedback and then see how we can incorporate that.
All right, thanks. Because they have been invaluable, all of them, in our community, but to see some mechanism that we can also incentivize them to do more. The contract performance monitoring provisions that we had put in there, we're going to be having enhanced reporting and that, I'd be interested to know if there is a percentage of cost that, that will add on to this, what that percentage is. Because the overwhelming majority of our citizens want to be sensitive to the cost. So to make sure between that and the administrative fee, that we're being reasonable on what's coming on and that it's not a big tax that's going to be added into those. So those are my concerns that I'd like to pass on. Thank you. I think we'll need some of those feedback from the haulers and the industry in a renewed place. I hope so.
Councilmember Jaren?
Thank you. Beth, we've heard from some citizens about, concerns about leaking trucks. Is there anything in the contract which talks about?
Yes, there, I would say two things that address that. The first of which is a requirement that the trucks that they use when the contract starts are new. So that's, that's one requirement. And then the performance monitoring provisions would, will hold them accountable to ensure that the trucks aren't leaking, and if they are, they're responsible for the clean, the cleanup of them. And then it's our way, over the life of the contract, to ensure that the equipment is maintained to the standards that, that we want for, for our community.
We could require them to be run by solar panels or wind turbines.
I think wind turbines would be really nice. Because they'd be moving.
Sure.
Okay, let's go to the next person on the list here, Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. Beth, other than state and federal requirements, do we have any special provisos in here for safety inspection frequency, given the, the number of hills we have around here, thinking brakes and hydraulic systems?
It doesn't speak to brakes and hydraulic systems in particular, but it says that they're responsible for maintaining safe equipment and this, the safety of the routes. So it doesn't speak to brakes in particular, but implicitly it would be covered.
Is there a specific inspection schedule that they stick to, or?
My recollection is that the, the performance monitoring would happen annually. But then, you know, we've had incidents even now where, for example, not with the brakes, but with the hydraulics, where there've been some leaks. And, you know, credit goes to the haulers where they've, they've, you know, notified us when there've been some issues and have been involved with the cleanup.
As I, I think I said once before, I've, I'm not going to name these provider, but I have noted hydraulic fluid on the streets occasionally. And I get a little concerned when I see that. If it's coming out of the lift mechanism, that's one thing. If it's coming out of brake fluid, that's another issue. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Huckabee?
Yes, also on the monitoring. I think the largest complaints that I hear from folks is the oil on the roads. And I have one person that I've met that has stopped putting their trash out there, taking it themselves because they're so concerned about it. The other issue I have heard is driver training. And specifically, drivers who have been driving the route for four, six, eight weeks, still, cans are still rolling down the street because they are failing to lift the cans and turn them over properly into the trucks. And I'm wondering how we monitor that? Because is this all through citizens' complaints that we hear? And then can we educate our citizens in a little bit different way so we get more responses? Because I've talked to a lot of people and said, you know, surprisingly, on an individual basis, you hear complaints. And yet, when we opened the survey, we really didn't get a lot. You go through and you hear, you know, the, the hydraulics and some of the other things. But a lot of people said, well, they didn't know the survey was open. So, what can I say? But how can we make it more, make citizens more aware that if they are seeing these issues where a driver doesn't appear to be trained, where there's hydraulics, or we have, we see something else going on with the trash collections, that they have a way to submit a complaint to you or to somebody else who's collecting that information and makes it part of that monitoring program?
Yeah, so we could look at how we could get word out to residents about, you know, sort of the, the feedback mechanisms. I can tell you, I do get calls from citizens now. I mean, are they, is it everyone? Probably not. But I am getting calls now. And when I get those calls, I do work with, with the two haulers to follow up on it. But perhaps we need to, we need to get word out in a, in a more comprehensive way that, you know, if people have concerns, that there is, there is an opportunity to provide feedback.
And that's why this contract performance monitoring provisions becomes so critical, and actually monitoring the performance. And then the question then becomes is, what is the cost of that and how do we recoup that? Do we want to subsidize it or this will be added on top of the overall bills?
Okay, any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Beth. Nice job. Thank you so much.
All right, I think we're adjourned.